You can keep that up.
Then you have to announce to everybody that they're, they're, it might be recorded.
Oh, yes, this is, this is a camera there with a voice recorder, so you may be recorded. Anything you say may be recorded. Rod's here to get informal information on a possible subdivision that we may want to look at. We want some general information.
So, we are the very, very early preliminary steps. God knows where this is headed. I'm a real estate agent, my name is Rod Diddel. I'm a commercial real estate agent for Cullum Bank. I represent a buyer who's interested in. This is the best view of the property that we're interested in. Most of them are lots, it's a, it's a collection of seven lots. Most of it's behind number 240 Central Street, which is the Doug, uh, Petnerian Place. And, uh, the contiguous, contiguous lots here add up to a little bit over 20 acres.
Who's the owner?
The owner right now, I believe, is Mr. Wilson.
Wilson's still on the side? The guy who's on the side?
Yes, I believe so. And he owns a lot of these lots, but he's, he's carved out these lots and put them on the market. And he had sold some other lots on the other side of the highway last year.
The other side of which highway?
I don't know, 240, which is on the right.
So he owned land on the east, east side of, went on a five or something?
I believe, I believe that's him.
What do you do?
Everywhere I looked, I found his name, so I mean, I just assumed he owned part of this property.
Okay.
Either here or there, because now we're talking about other ones.
So I guess we're talking about, uh...
No, we're up there.
Yeah, we are.
We're up in the wrong way.
Yeah.
Okay, come from the wrong direction, all right.
So, what is it?
Business, is it?
No. Residential, agricultural.
It's already, I've, I've pulled the assessors' report for most of these lots. And they all seem to be already. And I've done some preliminary reading of the bylaws that indicate that single-family housing would be permitted in the area. I didn't see anything about condominiums, but that's, you know, not necessarily where we're going. I think that my investors would be happy to know that the door is open to residential development.
Fifteen percent after me told you.
And I was gonna ask whether 40B would be the best way to go.
Uh.
Fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent, okay.
Is this?
This is light.
So does that mean?
What's this?
That's the railroad.
Oh.
So does that mean it's a 40B approach, or just, just allow fifteen percent affordable?
Fifteen, they'll allow fifteen percent.
Well...
For what? For what? For the houses he wants to build, that's developing.
But, but presently, the town is at ten percent. And so...
I did read that, sorry to interrupt.
So, we can, we can consider a proposal for a 40B. But we don't have to participate with it if we choose not to.
Okay.
Because we're at ten percent.
So my question is...
So, the other, the, the, just basic, basic question is if you evaluated the land as to the fact that it's mostly wetland and it's hog swarm?
Right, my next step would be conservation, and I didn't get there yet. This meeting came up first, so that's why, you know. I, I, I do know that I have to visit with the conservation people in the town.
I mean...
I did walk the property a little bit this afternoon, and I didn't see much of any wetlands, but of course, it's, it's a vast area.
Yeah, this is hog swarm, which means just...
Feeding the hog brood.
Yeah, the, I mean, I think the indication on this map, I, I don't know where you, what, what you copied here. Was this the assessors' map?
That was provided by the people that are representing the, the listing of the property for sale.
Yeah, I mean, I suspect that the fact that they've used this wetland symbol, um, on the entirety of this parcel, and this one, and this one, and the majority of that one, would... In my recollection of that property, I used that that's the issue of it's...
This is just the ridge.
It's hog swarm, right?
Everything else is lower than this.
And then, um, when people have looked at this before, the, the 10.5 acre parcel has some buildable land, but you end up with the issue of trying to get across the railroad. And I don't know if folks that looked at this before were successful in accomplishing that. So, that's the other hurdle that needs to be addressed.
There was something in the package that was stated to me that there was permission given by the railroad to cross over.
Right, but it's, it's a question of whether it's, it's permission to pass over, or whether it's permission to construct a, a public way to create frontage. And they have a 60-foot, you know, town-owned piece of property. That's frequently the right-of-ways across the railroad are significantly smaller.
Or, or you have to buy it, like the West Street.
Yeah, and this is MBTA.
There's another one that's...
This is MBTA as opposed to Guilford, right? So, um...
They're gonna be looking at it differently.
It's a different, if it's, it's a different entity that's gonna have ownership from what we've seen in some other parcels.
There was a letter, if you show it to you, I can show you how deep it went into this story, but...
The other hurdle is that we, in our bylaw, we have, in the subdivision control bylaw, provision that dead-end streets can't exceed 500 feet. Now, we've, in certain instances, allowed for the extension of the road longer than that, but I think what you're talking about here is...
Well, that's probably why it's significantly longer, and there's no way out.
This is a letter from the MBTA indicating that they would grant permission for an easement or some way to get across the railroad. Yet to be formalized, but at least the door, they opened the door to cooperate.
Because they need a subdivision road, a right-of-way, just a...
I, I see it as a, as a loop road that he comes in, he goes around, so, and then whatever house lines might get made out of that.
Comes in where, it goes out where?
Comes back on itself.
Well, the, the shaded road is Central Street. So we can come in here, work its way through, and come off here, but cross the railroad there.
It's MBTA, like...
But that's...
Which would be directly across the on-ramps and off-ramps of the highway.
So what's happening to the houses there?
We're not there yet.
Okay.
This is just...
I know, but...
Don't let me refuse.
I'm delighted that you're offering some, some wisdom, some wisdom, and some, maybe some expertise from somebody else in this area.
There's houses here, and there's a parking lot there.
MBTA parking lot?
Yeah.
Or mass?
Dot.
What?
The mass dot parking lot is there, yeah.
The road could be away from that, it could be over here, it could be into here, it could lie, you know.
But there's only one house that's there.
Are you looking at this house here?
No, this one, it's in the air.
Oh, that's way, there's a whole bunch of, uh, parks there. We'd be way, well away from all of those. The, the dog Petnerian is way over here.
Right.
So if we came in the far end here, we'd be...
You'd have to walk over that ridge.
Yeah, and then work our way through here and come back, the way I would have been here.
On over ridge and the slope of roads, we've been into that problem before. That's it, you can't have too much slope, firemen just have to get up, so if you got a ridge, you gotta go over it.
Oh, yeah. Like I said, I walked the area this afternoon, it was difficult.
Yeah.
The fire department gentleman back there, he sees big slopes, and he's, he doesn't make that. And superintendent of streets has to run a plot what he's...
Well, I would anticipate being certain of my rough involvement in the fire department.
Well, and the subdivision tells you what, what the, what the source could be. You have to figure it out from there, whether, whether it's a, a feasible thing that you can do, and is viable to, to make, bring that, that hill, ridge down. How much blasting you have to do, or whatever you have.
So, I think you're, you're right to pursue a conversation with the conservation commission, because they'll help you clarify what actually is the, the wetland portion of the property. And from that, you'll probably be able to determine what the potential number of units that you could build would be.
All right, thank you. I hope we meet again. Thanks for your expertise.
Yeah, I mean, the conservation's the, the next step, though, I think, for sure. They're gonna be able to help you determine where all that wetland is, but you're really talking about what we refer to as hog swarm, so it's pretty extensive.
So you got a name for the development already?
Yeah.
People will be running, so, so long around to come there.
Did you see any wild animals when you were back there?
I did not, I barely made it to the top of the ridge.
Oh, okay.
Probably's been on the market from now over a year, so I imagine other people that already know this and this, probably could work.
Well, nobody else has talked to us about it, really.
Not, not since, what, 10 years ago?
Maybe they figured it out before they got this much.
Their plan wasn't to go anywhere near as extensively into the back lots, it was just to use that 10-acre parcel.
Right.
And then just the foothills, the portions.
And the rest is gonna be open space, but their numbers, you could open up a rail trail restaurant.
You have a big agenda, I'm gonna get out of your way, thank you so much.
Sure.
Is that everyone's man?
We've got a request from the Sensis, they're on agenda tonight, one day ago. They can't make it, they're not ready, they've asked to go to the next meeting, but the next meeting is Jean Kipot. And they just to go on Monday, Wednesday. Anybody, anybody?
We're, we're gonna change our meeting time for them?
Well, let me to explain something else.
Hey.
So, I was to schedule a public hearing on the 8th of October for Indian Farm for the subdivision. And I wrote it, but I did not submit it. So, we cannot hold a hearing on the 8th.
Oops.
Now, there's five Tuesdays in October, so one of my thoughts was, do we have any interest in switching to the 15th? From the 8th and the 29th from the 22nd, um, whether that would work for people. But the 15th would be the...
So we, we got something, the 8th and 29th?
What?
We've got 8th and the, and the 20th, and the 22nd scheduled, but I, I failed to get the hearing set for the 8th. Sensis wanna come and talk to us, but it isn't good for them. And so the question is...
We killed two birds with one stone.
Which, which time do you have to be traveling, both of them?
22nd.
So if we move off the 22nd...
15th and 29th.
So that works for you, Beth?
15th and 29th, yeah.
And then I can put the hearing notice in tomorrow and get it in the paper, so we can do the hearing on the 15th.
Good.
We gotta change your, the bulletin board right away.
But if that...
Yep, that's fine, soon as I get an official document, I'll change it.
Okay, I'll give you, give you an email, so the planning board's meetings for October will be, then you'll change it. Okay.
Thank you. I move that we accept the minutes from.
9:10.
9:10.
Did you read them?
Yeah.
Shaky. You should put it out. Second by Janet, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion, corrections, any discussion, any corrections or additions?
We have a complaint about the...
Quality, I know.
That's what you're going to buy me?
I'm gonna put the paper in, push that little white thing that's in the middle, and the paperwork done. You can tear those out, give me, or you can buy one.
So we ask the town clerk, can, can we buy? Can the, can the planning board buy a scanner for the, for the clerk? Is that legal, town clerk?
I don't know. I don't think I have a budget.
A scanner?
The clerk, the scanner.
Scanner.
Where would you keep it?
Yeah.
At the clerk's place of business.
The physician?
Well, the, the big copier is a scanner.
Yeah, but he's not there.
Well, physician.
If you have the money, you can purchase it.
And we can keep it somewhere other than here?
I can, if we decide to want to.
If you get a case.
Maybe we should ask someone else, huh?
Well, I think, wait a minute, if we've been using his scanner all this time, do we owe him money?
We do, we owe all of us money for all of our equipment.
We charge like a dollar a scan, and then 350 meetings, you pay off.
That's true. Let me look into it.
Or you can tear those out, and I can take a home and throw them, that's another choice if you want.
What do we got? A continuation at 8, and then...
You didn't vote on that, sir?
You didn't vote on it.
We don't have any bills to thank.
You didn't call the vote. We called the vote on that. Called the vote on accepting the minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, I'll look into it, physician.
Scan and snap.
Yeah.
Scan snap.
Scan snap.
Okay. That's slow. Yeah, slow, I got, I got four minutes, too.
Do you, do you wanna do this in that time?
Sure, we'll get the, the...
My suggestion, how to get around. Sorry, it's cut and paste, because I didn't have a big computer to work on. By getting the restaurant finished, first of all, it is not a destination restaurant, it's a downtown restaurant. That is not a destination, except on your GPS. And third, all this talk about this is the way it's laid out, it isn't that the way it's laid out. It's, there's a door in the middle of the way they're laid out. And I'm suggesting that they put the outdoor eating there, do this, and then we...
Let me see, I took it even where?
Huh?
Okay, yeah, okay, I would agree with that, that's what I was thinking, too.
So a lot of the conditions that they were saying are not conditions that exist now.
What does that mean? What is...
Well, they're saying that this is the way they do business, this is where the door has to be, this is where, that isn't the way it is. That is just hyperbole that he's using in order to... It wasn't a square word, I said hyperbole.
I heard it.
Okay.
It's probably down, it's rotating, you need to rotate it.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making like a fast and pat, I'm just like, it's a possibility that we can do this.
Yeah.
And make it look decent for the road, still have the same number of parking. Get the road doing this instead of through their parking, you know, through everywhere.
That's awesome.
I don't like it, hey, they should hire you.
Huh?
They should hire you.
Well, these are the things that I have thought of, is bringing the... This is through, I mean, there's parking on either side of the road here, but I think I fit in the 50 spaces. This is much closer, putting handicap much closer to the door than where it was.
Yeah, they have windows all along here, right?
Yeah. You know? So I, I just figured we oughta get prepared to have a rebuttal. And if anybody wants anything to suggest, I think, for that, I'm working on it. This is the, the utilities are on the backside here.
If you, um...
What?
Janet, where are we? If you allow...
Where are we? I haven't been around.
Oh, here. We're here, come in, we're together. They were putting the thing back here, putting all the parking in front, they're taking the road out of the daycare, right through the middle of the parking where people are eating outdoors. And we didn't like it, 'cause that's not, we, we requested that the building's back up to the road and not have all the parking by the road.
So this is the old package store?
Yeah.
Yeah, basically.
Okay. The old package store.
The old...
Reese's.
Reese's package store.
Yeah, I thought it was down here.
No, no, it's here.
It's?
Yeah, but this is Bassett Road, yeah.
And they have this coming through here?
This is Bassett Road, right here, the U, goes, comes in by the pizza shop, and then I'm out, then I didn't, so then, if that's the case...
No, that's not Bassett, that's another path.
This is, this is the road that goes past the old package store. Yeah, it's Bassett Road.
No.
No, Bassett Road's by the pizza shop.
No, but it's...
And then it comes out here. Oh, they call that still... It's a loop. Oh, it's still called Bassett Road, sorry. Yes, it's a loop, continuous loop.
So this is leading like the end of the parking towards the road. It puts outdoor eating, which I think is a much more attractive thing to see near the road.
If, if you allow only handicap parking in front of the store, you know what I'm saying?
That's not where they had it.
No, what I'm saying, if you take your parking...
Right.
And you see the portion that's, that's in, no, the portion that's in front of the, that's closer to the street than the storefront.
Right.
No, no.
So how did you get that, honey?
Closer to the street.
Which street, this or that?
River Road.
Okay.
You've got about four spaces, right? That are closer to the street than the front of the store?
Yeah.
These four right here.
But you're getting in a road, you gotta push it.
Just saying, if those were handicapped, then it complies with our bylaw.
But you've got all 50 spots here, I laid it out.
Why would that comply with bylaw?
Our bylaw says that you have to have parking to the rear or to the side of the frontage of a building.
Yes.
Except for handicap parking.
So you could, you could switch the handicap to here.
If she puts the handicap...
Yeah, you could put the entry over here instead of there.
Which is where they wanted it, they sort of want a handicap, I mean, they want their entrance up front there.
Well, you could do that.
Yeah, in the handicap parking.
As long as you stay...
I'm not a restaurateur, but I would think that you want your entrance closer to where your parking is than making the walk that much...
But the, the, the thing is...
I like this.
I mean, the only thing I do, when I need those four spaces, right?
But the thing, the thing that they were telling us, that this was, this was the way their business runs, and it's not. That's an absolute false.
Why don't you, why don't you get some other inputs on this, see if people think about it?
So I've talked to...
I'll just finish this if I could.
I spoke with Sue Brown. And she really felt that it was important for us to...
Mine was okay.
So parking to the side...
Let's put this in the veins, we got a public hearing this morning.
Yeah, I know, but I was using the time, so we weren't sitting here staring at each other.
Okay, well, well, we're not staring at each other, but we gotta put this in. So, we've got some new inputs, and...
Basically, what did you...
Bethany, why don't you come up to?
All right, first I'd like to mention, hopefully it doesn't embarrass her, but I'd like to thank your review engineer, Bethany, who I think went beyond...
Yeah, we like her better than Scott.
Yeah. She goes a lot of the time, she, we still work together with the drainage, and I thank her for reviewing that at the last minute here and getting us to this point, so we weren't spinning our wheels more so. As of the last meeting, I had mentioned to you that we had subcontracted out the drainage design to another engineer. He has recently finished that up and submitted to Bethany, she's gone over, find two details of that, and has written a review, which was positive. But I'll let her speak to that if she'd like. But you also sent me away with a few requests to look at. Specifically, you wanted me to catch up with the fire marshal, Dave, who I met with, to just confirm with him that he was okay with the radiuses in the cul-de-sac. And that, and he acknowledged to me that everything was fine there. And he confirmed that there's a 25-foot pavement width around the, the cul-de-sac itself. You also asked me to meet with the highway superintendent, and we talked about snow storage, and he was satisfied with the ability of using the center iron for snow storage. Is everything coming together? And it was also raised that we have an emergency overflow out of the detention basin. Now, I want to remind you that that detention basin is sized to hold a hundred-year storm. But should really have something even more frequent than that.
Global warming.
That's right. But if, if we do have any flow that comes out of there, there was some concern about where was that water cascade down to, should there ever be any water? And there was one area along the shoulder of West Street, where the slope of the land came right down to the edge of pavement. And what Dave had suggested is that we simply arc that back within the right-of-way, and just line that new swale with some riprap stone. So that has been added to the plan, and he said he was all set with that. The plan set itself that I just passed out to you, there's been some grading changes to accommodate the drainage design, to make sure water is flowing where we need it to flow as opposed to some other off-site areas. So the grading has been addressed. And then there were a couple little minor issues, there was a pipe size labeled wrong that was fixed. And we did double up three of the four catch basins. Remember, we had talked about high-capacity storms might cascade right over a couple of these catch basins, and we didn't want that happening, especially down on the west, close to West Street. So we have added double grates on those three of the four areas. So that has all been added to the plan, and we'll get it back to Bethany, and I have one more thing I wanted to mention. We also, and this is the original letter, and I've got some copies, so the original from the clerk, but the, I've got copies here. We just wanted to ensure that the MBTA or Massey OT was all set with the, that they were all set with this project as it related to the easement that they retained for a future, we keep calling it a rail trail, I like their wording. I think they call it a multi-use easement, I'm looking for the wording here. But, again, for the rail trail, and they...
Shared path, shared use path.
Shared use path, yes. So they acknowledged that they were happy with that, and we just wanted that to be within the record of, of the minutes that that was received as well. Not that I'm directing the meeting, but if we turn it over to Bethany, if you've got any comments that I've...
Did you see this, what they're talking about?
Uh, no, I haven't.
That last paragraph, the last sentence.
I'll pass it over.
Oh, all right.
And why do they care where the snow is?
I felt the same thing. And the driveway is off the rail trail, off the easement, so...
But I don't know, did I follow the rail trails?
Sorry? The driveway is right here, and we have the rail trail, or the easement. I mean, we can call it a rail trail.
But it's, uh, the driveway looks like it's sloped towards the road, more so than the... I think that's good. So yes, they followed up on all of my main questions about the drainage analysis. I've got cut sheets for the catch basin, high-capacity inlet grates, and those check out with the models runoff for the hundred-year storm. So that would definitely be a possibility. And all of the pipes have capacity and can be deployed in the catch basin.
And again, in the letter that Bethany had composed, I believe this afternoon, there was a, one bold written statement there, which I had time to fix prior to coming here and had again sent Bethany a last revision, and that is just on that pipe diameter.
What are you actually reading?
Sir?
This is my life.
Yes, I didn't get it.
It was just sent... It was just sent out to say...
It was emailed. I went, I was here, I wasn't home.
It was emailed, it was emailed.
Afternoon, twelve-thirty, night view.
You don't want a septic pipe under the proposed rail trail.
What's that?
You don't want a septic pipe under the rail trail.
Yes. So I believe I've addressed all of Bethany's concerns and the concerns that you raised at the last meeting. If anything else, can I answer? I have a full-size...
Oh, yeah, I left that way both of them, but please, you're better. Hasn't been filed yet, that's all.
I do have a full-size set of plans, Tim, if you're looking at something in particular. Give me a bigger...
No, I'm not.
You just can't see.
The reduced sizes are much handier to flip around the table. You know, I'll Scott liked you better, I mean...
I will.
I like Scott. I'm the other side of the committee.
It's not to say that we don't like Scott.
Yeah. Sorry, too? Huh? Is that too difficult, too? Bronchitis and asthma, you know?
Cutting this road down eight feet, going through the ledge, is that ledge there?
No, that's all gravel.
That's a good one.
Very coarse, yeah.
We used to have gravel cuts out there when I was growing up.
So we got a house with three doors down. The backyard is all, it's amazing ledge, it's got stripes in it.
Wow. You built in the wall up front?
Yeah.
I probably recognized you.
So I cleared all the topsoil off the ledge, so my backyard is like this, it's like a rock garden type. It's unbelievable. It's all, it's all got like six-inch-wide stripes running up and down all of it.
Wow.
But there's gotta be some of that in here.
Oh, yeah, there's like...
Everything around it beyond this development is all rocky out there.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
It seems like the south side of the hill often has brown.
The glaciers push it all down, that's where they melt it right on that sunny slope. That's what old guy told me, to always look at the south side.
Yeah.
So we're looking for a waiver from sidewalks, a waiver from lighting. We're gonna... On page four, you've got item six, which is the sprinklers noted, so we'll just refer to that again.
Sure.
You're not asking for any other waivers, right?
No, we are not.
Anything else you think we should...
Curves? I think initially you would...
Is it required, curbs?
No.
So...
You think we should do something else?
You're using cape card, huh?
Those are the most high-risk, right?
But they use a cape card, huh? Yeah.
That's to keep it running from going off crazy.
But that's in the plan and it's covered, so there's no waiver involved. Is there anything you think we need to include in the, in the report that you've noted that is out of the ordinary?
Um, I don't think there are any...
There's only that bolted item, and they changed it, so that's moved now.
Um, for the sprinkling requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they sprinkler, Dave is looking at, I guess they have to look at it now, whether we should... That's, we may want to do it, but you... What's the advantage or disadvantage of the way, instead of just leaving it like that? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Do we have to go that extra step?
What extra step are you referring to? To put it as a condition of the approval?
Yeah.
That's fine with me. It's a condition of approval, it's on the plan, we intend to follow it.
Right.
Yeah.
It's on the plan, the plan gets reported.
Well, I think if it's pertinent to the approval, it could be easier for you to inform that if you have any issues or not, which I don't expect that you will have issues with getting it settled.
It's easy enough for me to show it.
I think it would be safe to do so. That way, not that these guys are gonna walk away from it, but if something happened down the road...
If they sell the property.
Right. Or you build one house and then sell the lots off and other people build off, it's everything stays with it.
Down the road, if the last one gets built, it doesn't get forgotten, right?
Right.
And we've known about it since you mentioned it back at the preliminary subdivision.
That's right on the table since the beginning.
Yep.
Oscar, does anyone have questions for us?
Does any, anybody that's coming here have any questions, comments on this, for this public hearing? This is a public hearing, so it's open to the public. Does the public have anything to say?
Did you send around the list?
We did before.
Just as a continuation, okay.
Any more comments from the board?
I think they look good. Thank you, Bethany.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any other discussion before we close it? I'm closing it. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have everything we need? We're gonna write up the...
I could spell, I'd be a genius.
Get a scan of his spell correction.
Yeah, that part of it is wonderful. I told you, I was a tough spelling bee, so really impressed nuns. She's not did a good job.
Unusual. Something you know, those say how to spell handwriting.
Handwriting there was excellent, excellent, and spelling was...
Anything else to transact business on this, at this time?
I mean, the only thing we need to do is break it up, and then the board will need to...
It'll be October fifteenth.
What will be October fifteenth?
Does the board have a need for us to be there on the fifteenth, or it's just simply that?
What?
And this was excitement?
It's open to the public.
Bethany, for your quick reply, and then we can...
You're very welcome.
Is Scott back from vacation, or is he on vacation?
He is back from vacation.
He was on vacation, was he?
Yeah, he was. But he's back now.
Well, thanks. Some thank you guys.
Thank you.
So what is the process from this point forward?
The planning board needs to take a vote on the, signing it, right? We've closed the hearing, and then once we sign it, then, once we close it, and once we sign it, once we sign it, then the appeal period is taking place?
So you're gonna prepare the approval document?
Yeah, and I'll send it to you before we meet again, so you can look at it and say, you know, that looks fine.
So the board will vote on fifteenth and file it with the town clerk the following day, perhaps? And then it's a twenty-day appeal period, I believe.
But I'll send it to you right next week.
Yeah. Put your order.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
So if you see something that's weird, you know, always.
Yes, thank you. It's a pleasure.
Did you have somebody up there surveying, doing some surveying on the road the other day?
The other day? No.
No.
There's been somebody, the last time, last week, that was surveying.
I did say, see that up by Derby Road.
No.
It was right across the street from the property.
Oh, really?
Yeah, right across from the entrance.
Well, I saw someone set up up at Derby Road, and I was wondering.
At first, they were down near the river, and then they were up a little further this side of Crackhart's House and going into a Jolene with the survey area.
I saw the tire tracks in the field there, I wanted to do the skittering around.
Was somebody, some, I was gonna write down the name of the company, but I didn't, because I just don't do those things. And, but I saw them three times when I went by.
Well, if they, if you do that, see if they want to buy it, okay? Give me the number.
I thought maybe they were ready to complain about it.
I don't complain, it was, it was okay. Do you need these?
Yes, the updated one?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
I'm Jim Royer from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I am here at the request of the chairman of the ZDA. We had, at the September eleventh ZDA meeting, we had a hearing concerning property at twenty-eight Oak Street. They've got some building permits to do some construction work. Originally got building permits to do, they were supposed to be here tonight, but apparently they didn't show up, so... This is all kind of advisory to you folks, they should be showing up at one of your meetings. But they got building permits to rebuild a bathroom and a kitchen. Somehow in that process, they blew out the back wall of the house and attempted to add a third floor. The building inspector went out there, apparently to inspect some footers and realize what was going on and... Put a halt order on the whole thing. So... Their problem is, they're on a little tiny lot. They're on lot forty-one.
Is this on what road?
This is twenty-eight Oak Street.
It's whose?
Whose? Whose? Oh.
So they're on this parcel. But they also own this one and this one.
Yeah, they have three lots.
Right. But they're on, the houses on this tiny bubble one.
Yeah, and that's part of the problem. Or at least, what Lynn Ryan is questioning. They're on an eighteen thousand square foot lot. They've got this house on it, it basically, it's grandfathered, but it doesn't meet any of the current setbacks from... It doesn't have enough road frontage, it doesn't meet setback from the road, it doesn't meet setback from either side of the lot line. It doesn't meet the seventy percent green space. It doesn't meet anything. So the question came up of being that they own these three lots.
And it's all in the same name.
Yes. They have three lots with three D's, they're all in the same name. The question was, could they be, all be combined into one or turn the three into two, somehow mess with it and take the total of, I believe there's a total of nine acres of land here. And they would then be able to, at least, they won't meet, still won't meet all of the current zoning setback requirements, I think. But at least they'd be able to meet some of them.
To make the land more perfect, is what the term that we've been told.
Greater compliance.
Greater compliance.
Yes.
So, but if it's all under common ownership now, they probably are supposed to have to do that.
Well, and that was, you know, the question from the ZDA is, would this board support doing that? doing that? If they came to you, they were supposed to be here tonight, but apparently didn't show up. And I don't know the process for that. Perhaps you could guide them on that. I think it's fairly simple. It's a redoing of the deeds with the county. But then, if that was doable and something the town was willing to support, that could somehow get written into their variances and whatnot that they're requesting, because they're still gonna need some other variances and things.
We need A and R, perhaps, to combine some of those properties.
If, yeah, I mean, it's basically a readup, removal of the lot line.
Right.
Yeah. So was it A and R that could change a lot?
Mm-hmm.
But, we had asked them to be here tonight to meet with you folks, so that's kind of why I was here, hoping to be able to explain it from the ZBA side. Hopefully they'll show up here next week.
Requesting that.
But they should know what's going on.
They'll have to put them on the agenda.
Well, but at least then, you'll know what the ZBA is asking, is when they come in here, because they may not be able to expound on why this is important to the ZBA, but...
So, what the bylaws says is that nonconforming, single residential structures may be reconstructed, extended, altered, or structurally changed upon a determination of this zoning enforcement officer, but such proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the nonconforming nature of said structure. So, the problem they have is that they've exceeded that, so they can't get issued a permit. So...
They're encroaching on the setback.
Right. And if they, if they add this other lot, they're probably still gonna run afoul of some of those setback issues.
There's no, the addition, the additional space that they would be adding would be to the back of the house and...
So toward the other parts?
Over towards this Lot Forty-Two.
Okay.
So it wouldn't increase any violations, for lack of a better term, on their frontage or on the other side of the house where they have the short... And it would also eliminate their issue with the seventy percent coverage of the lot.
And then the other part of the section is that the ZBA can grant a special permit if it determines that such reconstruction, extension, alteration, change shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. So reconstruction, extension, or structural change...
But they can make that as a swap.
Yep. Alteration to an existing structure provides a substantially different purpose, reconstruction after the task.
Right. So they're, they're in their, within their power to grant that, as long as they're willing to combine law, make that nonconforming issue less nonconforming.
So, all the appears just to change a lot.
So the question that we may get involved with, though, is in regard to the multiple lots, because the way I look at the map is that there's still that tiny little parcel that's out on Sixty-Two to the left side of the greenhouse.
Where the, where the broken-down greenhouse is.
Where Bertha, Bertha Bridges had her little office, right?
Well, it's now a broken-down greenhouse, it's caved in.
But the, but the house...
So, this is the broken-down greenhouse down here. So they have the lot behind it, and then off to the side of that.
Right.
But this, Bertha Bridges' office was over here, and her house was here, right?
Right.
And, and this parcel is separated, it's not entirely commercial, which I think needs to be clarified for folks.
It's a zone, though, right? I mean, it was included in that zone, and it was so many feet off of...
So, it's a thousand feet from the center line of Pleasant Street, where it intersects with Sixty-Two, so it comes down and it ends up somewhere along in here. So it's, it's, the greenhouse, I don't believe is in the commercial village zone. I think it's in the residential agricultural zone, this, the broken-down greenhouse. Because I think the line, you know, if you look at this piece here, it, it really seems to intersect with that spot right there. So it's sort of...
My guess is, and I, my guess is, they're gonna wanna combine Lots Forty-One and Forty-Two and leave Lot Twenty-Two as it is.
Yeah, but it's still in the same ownership, so we're gonna have to have a discussion about that if it's nonconforming. If that's substandard in terms of age.
If they're providing what they wanna do with it. If it's a standalone, nonconforming lot.
Well, it's in the same ownership, though.
Correct, but if it's nonconforming...
So, the question is, if you're gonna have them start to draw lot lines and have plans done for the combination of the house lot, substandard, with the larger lot, that probably doesn't have frontage technically.
Correct.
And then Sixty-Two does have frontage.
But isn't that their decision? Do they wanna split that and go house and...
And commercial.
That's their decision.
Well, not commercial, but Sixty-Two.
Frontage on Sixty-Two, right. But that's their decision to take that, the, in, in the middle lot and split it any way that they can to make both of them less conforming.
In the past, the, the assessor's office has asked folks that own three substandard parcels to combine them into two that are more compliant.
Right.
So I'm just saying, if they're gonna hire a surveyor, they're gonna have to survey probably the full extent of the middle lot, maybe you wanna just go whole hog and finish the whole thing at the same time. I mean, it's just a question of, we ought to explore that, though, so, if there's some ideas. And we should probably bring the assessor's office into the discussion, just to see where Molly stands on it.
What she'd like to say.
Yeah.
But, they should be in to talk to you folks. I don't, like I said, I'm not sure why they didn't show up to see me, but...
What's his name? How do you think?
They came to talk to us.
Carras, C-A-R-R-I-A-N. Rosanna, Rosana? Yeah, apparently they've been working on this Twenty-Eight Oak Street for months. They forgot the original building permit back in the last winter, and apparently started out doing what they said they were going to do, and then just grew. Let's put up a new wall over there. So...
Well, let happens.
I'll, I'll go see Molly if you want me to. Are they gonna go back and see you guys, or are they...
Well, there's, we have a continuation till what they, on October ninth.
Which is before we meet again.
Yeah, it's before we meet.
Yeah, we meet October fifteenth.
Hence the reason they were told to be here tonight. Yeah. But...
Postpone the proposal.
They'll just have to commit a request of another continuation. But...
But you've brought us up to speed, that's good.
They, they can't just postpone because this is something that has to be, this has to be noted, noticed on the agenda.
We were trying to explain it to them during the meeting, what we were attempting to accomplish, and I'm not sure we were getting through to them, so Lynn asked me to come over and kind of discuss it, so that you folks understood where we were coming from, regardless of...
We don't know, we don't know where they're coming from yet.
Yeah.
The good news is that they can have a conversation with us that's less formal than with you guys, so...
Yeah.
You know, if they do come to us, we can throw a lot of ideas around that would be hard for you two.
And not with the A and R at that time.
So I have a second issue. This one is strictly formal. This is a upcoming hearing for the ZBA, so I'm, have to watch what I say here. Here, on camera.
Yeah, who would you?
I have two questions and requests for this board, and I'm hoping I can get kind of yes or no answers without discussion.
What you'd like first, do you have some of them?
Just keeping the address.
This concerns an appeal of a building inspector's decision on Thirty-Six Burgum Road. There is an, apparently an issue with the common driveway, something with speed bumps.
Right.
There was a special permit issued for that, or, well, there should have been a special permit issued for that common driveway back in nineteen ninety-eight. So my question is, is there a special permit? If there is, can the ZBA be sent a copy of that before our October eighth meeting?
It's fine.
Or October ninth meeting? If there is not a special permit in writing, can we get copies of the planning board's meeting minutes concerning that common driveway?
In ninety-eight.
That discussion in nineteen ninety-eight?
Oh, dear God.
If they exist.
That's right. If ninety-eight's...
They have the big up Charlie.
If, if none of those exist, could we just get something from the planning board saying, these things do not exist?
Where would those even be?
Well, all the minutes...
Prior to the move and everything else.
All of us, all the minutes...
You've got the rest of our, of all information sitting right here.
All the minutes that, Bob?
Where's Bob?
Before, it was before we met.
Are, are in the bookshelves on this wall.
Okay.
And there's a lot of minutes.
Are there?
Yeah. So, we can easily look at those.
I didn't know what the date was.
Huh?
I didn't know what the date was.
Well, we're looking, we got common driveways in the file, so, you know...
I think he wants the minutes, if we can't find the permit.
Right.
If you find the permit, you don't need the minutes back.
So we can, we can go to the file that's common driveways, because Bob put all those in order, and, and we'll...
The, the plan is in there.
Yeah, and then we'll look at the date, and then we'll go to the minutes and see if we got the minutes that reflect that decision.
The plan, I saw the plan, plan exists.
Yeah, so, we, we can...
From the paperwork I have, I know the covenants were added as a, apparently that was a requirement. The covenants were added in August of ninety-eight, so I'm assuming any discussion took place in May, June, July...
Before this board's time, yeah.
Ninety-eight, sort of a thing.
Were you in then?
I was off for a little while.
Yeah, you've been off.
And I think that was...
That was the week you were gone?
I was off.
Jay was on it?
Jay may, Jay, Jay may still have been on. Ruthie may have been on.
Ruthie was, definitely. Morales, was it Morales?
Maria?
And the woman that owned the garden thing where the dog places now. What was her name?
It wasn't Wilson.
Oh, Judy?
Judy.
Judy Clark.
Judy Clark.
Clark. So it's Judy.
Was it Maria?
Maria, was it Maria Morales?
Mar- Minnens.
Yeah.
Ruthie.
John.
John.
Jay, yeah.
Well, I doubt that's who was on, but what's that to help us?
Well, so, yeah, we can, we'll dig up what we can, we can get in there.
If, if we have them, if they could just be forwarded either to Leanne in a, you know, paper copy, or electronically to the ZBA email account?
And I sent Lynn Town Council's comments to us.
Oh, okay.
In regard to our request for guidance.
I'm sure she'll bring that to the meeting with her, but I...
What, what, you sent Lynn Town Council, what are you talking about?
Remember, Town Council gave us some opinion on...
I think you were not there that meeting.
The common drive...
You may have been, you may have been absent.
But I'll send that to you, I could, didn't I, I saw you in the loop.
Yeah.
In regard to this, so I'll, I could send you that, too.
Can I just read a read?
I know the appeal that was included, they're referencing the current zoning bylaw, so I went and referenced today and looked at the one that was in effect when this all would have taken place back in nineteen ninety-eight, and the fifteen-degree slope issue did exist back then, although that particular paragraph has been amended since then, but it was there then, so it's, that was another question that we had, but I was able to answer that myself today, so.
That makes it easy for us, if you can answer it for yourself.
But if we could get something regarding either a copy of the permit, or copies of the minutes, or a letter saying, or even a note saying that none of those exist, or whatever, would be appreciated. I think it'll make the ZBA's, what we have right now, we're kind of going at it blind.
It'll make it look like you know what you're doing.
Well, yeah, at least, we could try. We could pretend we know what we're doing. Typically, special permit has conditions attached to it.
That'd have been recorded back then?
We'd be asked, they'd be asking us to, to hear an appeal, and we don't know what those conditions were, if, if there were any.
I imagine we just referenced the covenant, that's what they probably would have done. They said, you know, the covenant represents the agreement between, you know, the landowners that are gonna use the common driveway, and that'll be the ruling act that determines...
Hopefully, if that's, hopefully, you know, if there's minutes and that, what it says in the minutes, then we can use that as a reference, but, I think, right now I have nothing, I have, I have more questions than I have clues, so hopefully, somebody has some documentation somewhere that...
Well, I mean, Town Council's guidance to us was that it's a, it's a matter that is between the parties that are signatory to the covenant, and that...
Yeah, unfortunately, the parties aren't acting in good faith, for one or the other.
What?
The parties aren't acting in good faith, for one or the other.
Yep, so...
That's true.
Well, he said before my board, so I'm gonna say what I wanna say.
All right, that's all I have. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thanks. Is that it?
What do we have to do with the senior, answering the Town Council on the senior residential development? I, I, I looked at that question, I couldn't make what they, they were trying to approve.
I, they're, they're trying to figure out if we...
Was it good to copy that, huh? On KP Law, one, no?
No, you don't.
Margaret got a question from KP Law regarding probably the conservation easement that Chris Slade put on the property on Highland Street. And I haven't read it closely enough, because I think he probably puts in language that says, if he needs to build water and septic on the land that's under the conservation easement, he can do it. I think he has it anyway, I mean, that's the plan, and that if he needs to get on that property to do maintenance or whatever, and probably even, I mean, he may have expansion areas that are defined in the conservation. I imagine he put in language that protected the right to do what needed to be done in order to maintain the systems.
Remember what I heard, KP Law says you can't do that, that's against state laws.
Is that what they were saying? But, but...
Why?
But we just, we just did that, the Conservation Commission just did that with the parcel on, across from Spooky World. I mean, they left the right to develop water and...
Let's, let's get...
So we're looking at it more closely.
Get that, that letter from KP Law, make sure we get, and next meeting, let's look at that a little more fully.
We discussed that today.
The state says you can't put the sewer and water from the conservation, or you can't make, get an easement.
I don't know the details. There was something in, in, in the letter from KP Law about, and I, I...
Who's KP Law?
That's on Town Council. They're not Coleman Page anymore, this is KP.
But evidently, someone, someone must be reviewing the agreement between the town and Chris Slade in regard to the... Chris Slade in regard to the conservation restriction.
So you said you haven't seen it all?
No, I haven't seen it.
I was looking for it tonight before it came. I didn't get Tom, I couldn't get.
Elise is a question.
At the last, after the last meeting, I saw Chris Slade and I explained to him about the misspelling of Spofford.
Oh, good.
I sent an email to his daughter, who was one of the four daughters, and he said, I just came to my own true meeting.
And I'll send you KP Law's thoughts on common driveways.
Just so I can put them in their file.
Yeah.
I wanna know if, I wanna know if.
What's next?
If I miss it.
Is that it, really?
Well, I wanna ask, I wanna ask for your input on what I've done, what needs to be changed.
I like it, I like it.
Can you inform me that when you're in the neighborhood, show up for a match and say that.
Do what?
Inform me when you're in the neighborhood, have to get in the sound to refuse it, show up to that site and say that, we, we didn't vote on this, but.
You want, you want me to leave the room here, right?
No, I'm just saying that in our bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
Those four spaces would be non-compliant, so if, if you can get rid of those four, then it really gets sweet.
Well, I can, by just shifting it this way.
Yeah, but I like it. It accomplishes.
Well, it makes the place more attractive than the way they were doing it.
I said, I called Sue Brown and I said, you worked on this with us, what, you know, and she said, well, your goal was to make it a mixed use and you wanted to elevate slowly and you wanted to put buildings on the street and, you know, that was your objective. So then I was talking to one of the planning board members from Shrewsbury and, and I was saying, what didn't you do? You did some mixed use projects. I said, that Spags thing, and she says, yeah, and I said, so how many apartments? She said, two hundred and fifty, and it's on four stories, so it's essentially six buildings, just like ours. And they're all in the back, and then Whole Foods is on the street with parking behind it. The CVS has got parking in front of it, a building behind it, so it's, you know, they're juxtaposed. But then you, but you go up the side street that takes you over to two ninety, the back way.
This is yards.
And you take a left and you go into the project and all the permits are here and all the parking is in this pocket behind and you've got restaurants.
Found Whole Foods there, but it was only because of my GPS, I never would have known it was there.
And see the eating stuff is in there.
Really?
Because it'd be the same thing you did too.
Sit down there and look at it.
Through traffic from the, behind the parking. They're getting it coming right through the eating.
I don't think any of us like what the, the. So the front, the back of the Dunkin' Donuts building.
They would stick eat when there's traffic coming through.
It's kinda cool looking, it's a bar.
Coming through, just like this.
You know what it looks like to me when I looked at it?
Dunkin' Donuts?
Eating?
Yeah.
Trinket coming through, see that, you can almost see the lines of it and coming out to you.
It looks like a abandoned property, because there's, there's all the tables and chairs.
See, that's where they had it coming out.
There's no one there, no windows looking into the building and there's no parking, there's nothing. I think it's a great idea, but that's not how it's viewed.
I don't think, I think, I mean, when I drive in now and I look at the cafe, I look at the signage that we agreed to and I think.
And by our bylaw, we were.
At ten o'clock at night, it probably would be turned off.
Away from the street.
It doesn't need to be, you know, glaring out. I think the drive-through road around the building doesn't allow you to landscape the building at all, so it looks like, you know, it's just sitting in the middle of. The cafe. It looks like it's sitting in the middle of a parking lot.
There's no, there's no windows or activity or anything.
That's right, and, and you can make windows that aren't even windows, if you want.
That's what I said.
My point is they would be like the nice facade on the back of the Dunkin' Donuts, it looks abandoned.
If you choose to make them that way, but you can do things with, with windows that don't speak, you know, a negative view. They speak a positive, welcoming view.
I think what's missing is people and cars and activity and.
So you'd say move the building back and throw a bunch of parking lot in the front.
Parking lot and the outdoor seating, because then there would be activity.
Well, that's what they wanted.
I can see the argument for it. It makes it look like it's alive and open and all that, which makes.
Yeah, but you can do that in different ways.
Well, what you've got, if they, if they took what you have there and the, and the side that's facing the old liquor store and the side that's facing the gas station, those two sides, they had glass all the way around so that when you went in like the, on that corner, there's seating on both sides and you have the outdoor seating in the front and all that, that would probably work, because it would look like it's open.
I, I walked in there the other day, because I was trying to get this, like.
The cafe?
From Matt, yeah. He, I walk in and he said to the young woman working there, oh, this is on camera.
Yes.
And he said to the young woman, this is Janet, she's from the planning board, we've got to work on her on drive-throughs. And I said, no, you have, you have got to hire an architect who designs buildings that are welcoming. This building is not welcoming. They, you know, they don't, they don't see the big picture of what draws people in. They, oh, we made a nice looking building and I'm gonna put a drive-through around it, you know? And, and if you go to any, any older town in New England and you look at the lovely storefronts, what you have, you have windows with display there, you know, they just display their product there. And then there was a door to go in, but what drew you in was the window, it wasn't the door. And so they're not, they're not thinking through their marketing strategy, they, they just aren't thinking through.
But that, that red barn building, because the entrance is in the back.
Where?
The. What do you call it, the cafe? Because the entrance is in the back, unless you're gonna have the whole building be.
No, you, you could, you could, you know, there are two slants there. You could put up windows, you could put up displays, you could make it a display case and light it, so it visually brings people into what they're trying to sell.
Maybe wanting to see that it's open, which means there's people in there eating and drinking.
Right.
And you can't do that if the entrance is in the back.
Storage area in the back, in the back.
Well, you could, you, you could have, if they had designed the building, if they twisted the building, you could have done it, you know, it, it. You can't just put lockdown and say, this is gonna appeal to everybody because I designed it.
That's a done deal. What about this one, yeah?
Well, he said, what did you say, get rid of four spaces here?
Make them, reallocate them.
Huh?
Reallocate them.
Yeah, make them.
Well, I can, I can actually get rid of them.
Get rid of them or make them handicap?
Or make them handicap, but then we've gotta move the door down here.
Yeah, but I, I think that's, I think Tom's right, I mean, that's not, that's practical.
I need enough, I, I've been chopping up, I went down to UPS and got, uh, them to make, fold it up and make several copies so I could cut it up.
Nice job.
Are you gonna, are you gonna show it to Matt?
Yeah. But they'll come in, but one, the thing that bothers me about this whole thing is Matt came in here and said to us, this is what they have. This is the model that works, it is not what they have. It absolutely is not the model they have. Hasn't he said that to you?
Parking's in front and the outdoor seating's in front.
Yeah, it's a town road.
I, I think the other thing that worries me is that.
He said, this is the only model that works, and the door has to be over here, the door is over here.
Once, once this moves back from the street, the others really do have to move back from the street. You can't, well, and the, the traffic flow would be weird.
Horrendous.
Yeah, it'd be going snake.
Yeah, I hated that business.
We made that.
That's still on the original plan.
So what?
That's still on the original plan, that this, as this crosses, this Newsome Road crosses through.
And goes over.
It goes back towards Red Barn Coffee. It's, it snakes through the property, so the buildings are staggered, but of course, that's, that could be gone.
I think you did a good job, didn't you?
Yeah, but if you've been on Route twenty in North Road, Jay's saying the same thing, right across from Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah.
Those two buildings right there, that plaza.
Right on the street.
It's, you're looking at the back of a building, you have no clue what's, what's there. I don't even know what's in there.
There's a picnic center on one side and a restaurant on the other.
You can't find a place to park.
Really?
You go there on a, on any night at six o'clock and all the parking spaces are full.
Is that what they should have doing to business there?
Wow. And, and, and sometimes, sometimes I park on the curb up in the back.
You know, the thing, the way I did this was to make it slightly slower.
Is the Hillside Grill?
Yes.
Nice little place, but it's, you can't find a place.
Who knew? I'll get on that.
I, I, I looked at, Jesus, it looks like it's deserted, I wonder if anybody goes there.
I mean, certain times of the day you can pop in and pop out.
I wish I'd had a, I almost went over to see if any of my architect relatives could, let me use a computer for one, but I'd have time to go visit them.
Well, then I could time.
No, I don't, I've got my house rent to pay.
You phone to the floor.
You're on candid camera. You're on candid camera.
You're here too loud.
Well, I can move this.
You're from the fire department, it's there, you're talking about.
I don't.
Did you hear that?
No.
We wanna take a look at that.
I'm gonna go down to the hall and see.
We wanna, we wanna discuss the solar. Not on the agenda, do we put it on the agenda?
Is it timely action?
Kind of, I'm not taking any action.
We don't take any action.
I'm sure I went to this, it was kind of a discussion.
Which one?
It was the CM RPC.
Oh, yeah.
And they were having a discussion about solar bylaws, it was kind of an stark discussion.
This one in Oxford?
Oxford.
Oxford.
Here's the highlights. Did you know there's a town named Landford?
Yeah.
Who came up with that name?
How long have you lived in Massachusetts?
I hear about new towns all the time, but never knew about.
The highest point on the Mass, spike in Massachusetts.
Is it real?
Yeah, Landford, Melbourne.
Now, what, what was this solar about, municipal solar, solar for private home?
This is primarily about large solar, like.
The solar, bigger solar, right?
So apparently, there was a tremendous amount of interest in these large systems because of all of those are tax breaks and incentives and whatever, so the developers can make a lot of money on them. So a number of towns got a lot of applications and some had moratoriums and some allowed them, and there was some support. But now what's happened is, at least, maybe we have a select group of people there from towns who are having trouble, but the tide seems to have turned. In, I think it was Brookfield Field where they got their, they were promised, they put nine sites in and they were promised all sorts of real estate and personal property tax revenue, and then the owners, whoever the owners were, went and got a, essentially an abatement. That's basically how it works, so now they pay zero.
How do they get an abatement?
Because, uh, real estate and personal property taxes end up going through the tax collector and you can file abatements, and I guess there's some. There's some loophole, whatever, that allows them to run it down to zero.
But they, somebody has to approve it, don't they, doesn't it?
I don't know, they, they got sued and lost.
Or the town got sued.
Yeah, by the developer, or the owner. So that's a problem, and apparently the, it may be, I think the people from BAR were saying that they were setting up the pilot agreements based not on real estate or personal property. They were based, based on per megawatt of production, because you can do that. And so far, that seems to be holding up.
Which is what? We had done.
Is that right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it was a figure based on, I mean, that's what Diane worked out.
That's for this, this one or yours?
That's for ours, and I would, I hope we followed the same model. Because I know that Molly's been privy to these discussions about those communities that didn't use that format and the difficulties they were running into with the state interpreting the, the agreements is not binding essentially.
The other issue is decommissioning, so Brookfield got quotes on decommissioning. And it's really expensive, it's like at least a hundred grand per megawatt. So you'd be talking about a million dollars or something to take one of these things back out, whatever it is, twenty-five years from now.
Yeah, ours is three meg, their, the other, what's, POTUS is maybe four, three and a half.
So it's three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars.
And so what the clause is, is that within X year of this, of the agreement, there's a provision that you end up going through that decommissioning process and beginning to determine what needs to be bonded and set aside.
So one of the problems, maybe you've worked around it, is that these things get flipped multiple times. So you gotta be careful you don't have a decommissioning deal with, you know, an LLC or something that's not involved.
Well, me, so you end up with that provision that talks about your successors are assigned and, you know, theoretically that binds anybody that follows in the, in the train. What happened, Sun Edison went belly up, Sun Edison had a subsidiary called Terraform, which controlled the site that we have. That site was flipped to Brookfield Renewables out of Canada, so they own it now. And where Sun Ed was delinquent in, in paying on time, both to the town and to us, Brookfield Renewables has been right on target. So we went through that early stage where I think the industry wasn't as stable. And now somebody like Brookfield is trying to get into solar, I mean, they're the largest hydro producer, because they're out of Quebec, I suppose, and but they wanted to venture into solar, so they, they started picking up parcels.
How do you ensure, and they were, they were saying that, well, they're requiring the developer to hold the project for three years before they flip it, so they make sure everything gets done properly, and then they wanna cash escrow upfront for the decommissioning.
Who's they want?
This is Brookfield.
Or Brookfield.
That's what they did, yeah.
Because they're worried about ever being able to have an entity that's gonna live up to the, the decommissioning, which could cost a million bucks.
Yeah, well, I mean, and, you know, if, if it's a hundred thousand in today's dollars per kilowatt, then obviously twenty years from now, you're talking about substantially more.
That's true.
So you, you know, that's why, you know, if it's three meg and it's three hundred thousand today, there might be a million dollars in twenty years.
They're asking for two fifty.
Two hundred and fifty a megawatt?
It costs a hundred and fifty dollars per panel to take them out, and there's like a billion panels, and they're worth nothing.
Someone will find a use.
Yeah. Let's see, what else, we got a.
Send them back to China.
There was a bunch of discussion about.
Send it back to China.
What happens if you don't take them out?
Like scarred the landscape forever.
I mean, if, if we have a solar farm and it's there, and also it's not working, it doesn't look any different whether it's working or not working, right?
Well, I think with the, what's getting recognized in some of these towns where they're not getting tax revenue anymore, if, that they just, in some cases.
They're in deep trouble.
They're putting them in places where the solar farm is actually better than what was there before, because it was some ugly site that was, needed to be cleaned up.
Cap landfill or whatever.
Or sand beds, yeah, and stuff like that.
Or, no, there's some, I forget what was something else, but in other places, you know, they're envisioning something that's invisible and it turns out it's not. It's like what's going on down there, where it's gonna be like, oh my God, and, and.
Yeah, but with all the trees, it's supposed to free them.
No, they weren't supposed to take all the forest away out of the zoo, you can't go put the trees back in, you gotta leave what's there.
Yeah, if you looked at the decision from the ZBA to determine what the buffer requirement was, I haven't looked at it. I mean, I, there must have been a buffer.
I would think so.
Well, we have that in the, in our bylaws.
I think we might have said that it had to be not visible from the street though, that's what I read.
Yeah, I think.
And so somebody could say, oh, well, it won't be in twenty years when the. And so somebody could say, "Oh, well, it won't be in twenty years when the four-inch catalog for trees that we put in grow up."
Yeah, the chowmy brown trees.
Yeah. So the other problem is, like, some of these developments are supposed to put something on the ground after you strip all the topsoil off. You're supposed to plant something that will retain the water.
Now, in our case, the ZBA met with Blue Wave for quite a while, and they, they banded that one around a good bit. And the, there was some discussion about putting topsoil on the whole gravel pit site and growing grass, but...
What kind of grass?
Well, I mean, you know, they, what the argument was, is that it was more problematic to maintain and a higher risk of, like, fire and stuff like that. So they said, you know, so they drew, they drew away from that, because we had, I mean, there was a lot of compost on that site, which at first it appeared as though we'd be able to have that compost spread on site instead of having to haul it all off, because they need it, you know? But the way the ZBA looked at it finally was that it would be better off without...
So the problem is, I guess, I think it was at Brookfield also, that they did not put anything back, and they got an entire neighborhood below it that was flooded. And now the residents are sipping the town.
Yeah, I mean, and I think what the ZBA did here was, you know, look at the situation, look at the drainage, and they, they had to come up with what their plan was, and they ended up with, you know, passive drainage in some spots.
With all the gravel pit.
So it was plateaued.
Stormwater invasion.
Plateaued in such a way, you know, so... But yeah, Brookfield wasn't looking at that issue, I could see how runoff. I mean, theoretically, you ought to be looking at any project in our argument, you know, there's no increase in runoff, that's, that's one of the things we always look at. That, that, that if there is, that the peak, there's no impact to peak runoff. And...
Charlton has capped the number of sites.
The which one?
Charlton has capped the number of sites.
Well, yeah, Charlton's got what, I mean, they got tons of them, just like Brookfield.
Ninety or something?
Yeah, I was gonna say ten, but...
No, maybe, they, I think it was a twenty, they have twenty, and they capped it at twenty, and the AG approved that. So you can, at least for the moment, you can do that. I don't think, we've capped it by an acreage requirement that nobody can meet. More than five can meet, right?
Right.
So we're probably okay with that.
In terms of residential agricultural zone, you could still see them built in the, in the limited business zone, but it would be, I mean, there again, that it's the quarry, which isn't gonna get anything done soon, up behind the mobile station, which has a higher value probably for some other limited business use at some point, so I don't think that people would pay a dollar.
Worcester Sand?
And Worcester Sand, which, you know, we're talking about marijuana instead, so, for now.
Which takes a while, like, a few years, I think.
Yeah, you could have two.
So the other thing's happening is the utilities...
Well, those towns, those towns were wide open, though, in terms of, you could build in the residential agricultural zone and not just like we did, limited business or... I mean, I, I mean, I don't see how Charlton could end up with twenty sites unless the town is wide open, and Brookfield's the same way. Which, again, we, we passed the large-scale, you know, solar volcanic in order to become a green community. And, and, and that was one of the stipulations. You know, make the door wider for a, a, a green use. And, but we didn't open the door completely, we just said it's gonna be allowed in these zones.
Yeah.
Which is the original zones. Yeah.
We're on large parcels, right?
Yeah.
So the utilities, we've got National Grid to run some impact studies, because they're having a problem dealing with all this intermittent power getting pushed into the grid. And I can say they had eighteen thousand requests right now.
Eighteen thousand requests for what?
Solar? For solar installations and the...
Is that of all sizes? Probably.
Must be. And the installers now have to pay for the upgrades to the grid. But they're doing them one at a time, because they're, until they get the study done, they're trying to slow it down.
So I wanted to throw a couple panels in the, on the farm in order to generate power for the farm. And I had to, the, the first panel was fine. Anything beyond that was gonna bump their grid needs, and I was gonna have to pay for the transformer upgrade on the street.
That's the new deal, yeah.
And so I'm looking at that now.
But they're also gonna take, wherever you approve your application.
Um, I mean, I'm in the pipeline, I expect to get approval sometime, you know, mid next year.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I, that's, I factored that in. I just said, "I'm gonna apply for some grants with the Mass Department of Agriculture Resources, because they're trying to get farmers to be more self-sufficient and go greener, and so if I can get a little bit of money from them, and then, you know, there's other, you know, there's, there's a lot of angles." But, so that's why I went and started the process of applying, so... And then they said, "This is what you have to do in terms of upgrades to the system in order to bring on that extra capacity, even though you're gonna use the majority of it." I mean, I'm gonna use basically everything I generate on the farm, but certain times of the year, I'm gonna be passing it on to them more than other times.
We're using all of ours.
Yeah.
But it's not generating as much as was promised. In New England, I mean...
Yeah, you can't.
You look at how much daylight you get.
Yeah.
If it weren't for all the taxes and that and stuff, I don't think it would be worth it. Unless you got more grown marijuana, then it would be...
Fucking hell.
Did they talk about growing crop on farmland under systems and stuff like that? They didn't talk about that?
You Mass is doing a lot of the work on trying to figure out whether you can pasture sheep or grow certain types of crops that don't mind a little bit of shade, that sort of thing, under, under the system.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Fry's a bear.
Gold sheep.
Yeah, chump, chump. So, so I just look at the, whatever agreement is getting developed for the POTUS and make sure it has those provisions in it.
Yeah. They didn't talk about small systems like we were talking about in terms of how to protect the butter and stuff like that.
They did not, no. It was, no. And there's a new thing coming, because you've got these solar arrays that produce when the sun's shining, and they produce a ton of power that's going backwards through the grid. But you can't count on it, because as soon as a cloud goes over, oops, quick, fire up all the coal power plants. So there are companies building these battery backup systems, basically, like Conex. And they'll park them, I presume they stick them near where the solar arrays are. But they're forty-foot trailers with batteries and air conditioning systems, and they hum and all that stuff, so they're...
The neighbors love it.
The neighbors not, not worry about that, plus they're full of toxic waste.
You know, in Vermont, Vermont Power, or whatever they're called, incentivized homeowners to put the Tesla battery packs in their houses.
Yeah.
So our friends that have got solar up there are supplying their needs, but they got a battery pack now that they got substantial subsidy from the, from the, from the power company, because now that's their, and, and they know, I mean, you know, that's being drawn off from them at certain times, and then certain times it's being recharged. I mean, there's an agreement as to, you know, how much they can take off.
What kind of batteries are these?
They're huge.
It's not.
Well, they're like the size of the table, right?
No, it's, it's about the size of the map there. And it sticks out about that far from the wall in the cellar.
Oh, that's right, one of my friends from Sudbury.
Tesla. And, and, but it's cool, you know, and I thought, huh.
Well, that's what's gotta happen, basically, is there's gotta be one of those...
Then, yeah, then you've got that give and take, and you've got the backup capacity and storage, and when you need it over here, you can pull it, and when you don't need it over there, you can take it back.
And you can use your car for it, just grab your car and...
And you could go on a boat, and that whole damn thing could go up in flames because the batteries backfire.
That's right. But we're in that transition, transition period, that's for sure.
Well, I took a survey in, I think it was Westbrook, Brookfield, of the residents, and five hundred to one were opposed to large solar now.
Five hundred to one?
One to one.
Ratio of pro and opposed to large solar, but I think that's because they end up getting all their tax revenue.
They lost all that money?
Yeah.
I mean, I can see how people here... All right, thanks for coming. The eighty, I mean, it's eighty thousand. If you could, if the eighty thousand walked away tomorrow, people would say, "Why did we do that?"
They still say it about everything we do.
But right now, there's eighty thousand coming in that doesn't demand, I mean, you haven't made any calls down there, have you? I mean, I don't think anybody from town has ever had to step foot on the property, so...
Well, you know, the ones that they have...
I've never seen yours, where, yours is...
Ron does, I haven't put it on my screen yet.
You can see it?
Accept, acceptable, acceptable...
Life of vigilance.
I know, I admit it, I'm, I'm, I'm in default, you know?
What are you gonna do?
One neighbor says she hears a hum.
He's down the street.
Who does?
One of my neighbors.
That you're a hum?
Yeah, I, I walked out.
Well, there might be a transformer that's at the beginning, at the entrance.
Yeah.
There's a series of poles with transformers, uh, stacked.
You can't hear a few... If you're meditating, the hum is really nice.
He's close, he's closer than you.
No, this is, this is neighbor, well, the neighbor next, next to your father.
Yeah.
I've never heard anything down there, but...
No.
No, she...
And he sits out on the deck, back deck? Well, maybe not.
Tell her she's got a...
No, we know.
But stuck on radio.
Well, it's been a while, but it's his next-door neighbor, so...
You know, there's no economic value, the aesthetic value, it's like getting money back from the government in any case, any time. It's just so satisfying. You get National Grid having to knock your bill down by a detailed rate of electricity is just wonderful. It's like going to Canada, and you can, you used to be able to get the Quebec QST and the national taxes when you went up there, you know, for vacation or something, we go snow, you're like... You fill out all this paperwork and stuff, and you get a check back, and it's not a big check, but it's really great.
I gotta go.
Spencer has an eight-page solar bylaw. We should get a copy to be assessed.
Yeah, try to take our bylaw around, I'm a gentleman. You wanna make a motion to close the meeting?
I'm moving to reclose the meeting.
Who seconded?
Seconded.
Any other discussion? Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.